Thank you all for being here. Just wanted to welcome you to the tonight's school committee meeting, the regular meeting of June 27, 2023. My first time chairing the meeting, so looking for a little help and guidance. Sorry we were a few minutes late. We were just waiting for a quorum and now we're ready to go. All right, first thing up is open public comment. And I don't think we have anyone signed up. So I believe we're going to be able to just go to our second agenda item, which is going to be the approval of the minutes. It is the minutes for June 13 of 2023. Does anyone have any comments or questions on these minutes?
Nope. Nope. I make a move to approve the minutes for the June 13 meeting.
Second.
All in favor? All right, minutes are passed. Next item on the agenda is the elementary standard-based report cards. Karen McKinnon is here and we're going to take a look at her presentation. Thank you for being here.
I think before I start, Stephanie's gonna...
Sure, just a point of clarification. Noel Hendrickson is also on the agenda because the changes, the recommended changes to the report card do not fall underneath the math and science curriculum standards. She'll not be here. That is just an error. If you take a look at the memo that was sent over to you, it summarizes the nature of the changes and the reasoning for why we're proposing changes at this time. This, we were having conversations about making changes to the elementary report card during the English Language Arts Curriculum Review last year. There are, there have been multiple changes to curriculum frameworks since the last time that our report card was modified that Karen McKinnon is going to speak to tonight. Another thing that you'll find in the memo is just a little bit of a summary and a description of the depth of the changes. They are minor, they're not a dramatic departure from our existing report card. This is really just to reflect the curriculum frameworks adjustments that have been made over the course of the last couple of years by the state and make sure that we're in alignment and reflective of those curriculum frameworks. So I'll turn it over to Karen.
Perfect. Thank you. So we'll go through the slideshow here. So as Dr. Burrows just said, these changes just to the ELA and the history, social studies, social science standards fall under the categories of the English Language Arts, speaking and listening, and social studies. So an overview of our process and timeline is we reviewed report cards during spring grade level meetings with each of the elementary schools, all the teachers in attendance. And then I refined a few of them, looking to keep that vertical alignment going. And then I presented the draft to the teachers at our end of the year meeting. Everyone was very pleased with the outcome. They did a lot of work during that initial spring grade level meeting to kind of, again, make these minor adjustments in language that they feel align more to the standards and will be easier for families to understand what those indicators are actually calling for as well. So the revisions will be shared with families either at open house or obviously during the fall conference time, which is really the time where families and teachers spend a lot of time going over that report card. But there's not really anything major that I think people are going to be worried or concerned about. One of the things that you'll see that we did do is separate out what's called foundational skills from our literature and informational standards because it's a really important focus and a really important piece, especially for K-2, but a little bit into grade three, too. And again, some adjustments just to language to reflect the new, or the curriculum updates and then removal of a few standards that no longer are aligned with the Massachusetts frameworks. So this is just a screenshot of the kindergarten report card. And so you'll see over on the left is the original report card and then on the right is the proposed report card change. So we have the foundational skills and then we've just a little bit of wording here or there, but it really doesn't amount to a lot of language, combining a couple of things, clarifying a few things, but just really three items that had some changes. Speaking and listening, the same thing, just a couple of phrases, a little bit of wording that's different. And then the history and the social science standards, we kind of combined a few things and had this more... What happens with the history and social studies standards curriculum is that we're trying to weave it into our ELA instruction. And so having a definitive time where we're saying we're going to meet this standard gets a little bit difficult sometimes because if they're a little bit later in their instruction because kids are, you know, taking a little bit more time to acquire that knowledge, then we get to the reporting period and the teachers don't have that ability to, like, let's say if they didn't go into enough about holidays and traditions yet, then we've got to shade out the report card. So we switched over to the more general understanding of taught civics, geography, history, and economic concepts that allows the teachers that flexibility to kind of give a little bit back and forth and not have to, you know, worry about the dropping of the, of the end of the, end of the marking period. Same thing with grade one. What you'll see here is that we did add the foundational skills, which wasn't kind of separated out as explicitly. And that's really important for our standards to have that in there. Literature and informational text, the standards really call for the students in grade one to be doing some of this work with prompting and support. And that's an important piece to get in there that aligns with the current Massachusetts frameworks. And then writing, we made some adjustments to focus on the three genres of writing that students are responsible for producing in the grades. Same thing with social studies, we just kind of aligned that civic knowledge and understanding. That's a really important piece for our history and social science standards. So you'll see that kind of explicitly laid out there as well. Second grade, same thing, foundational skills. I don't know whether you want me to go through every single one, but it's just, yeah, it's just the same, the same thing. And then you'll notice when we get to third grade, the foundational skills. And then the difference for fourth grade is there's no, no longer that foundational skill separation. It's just the English Language Arts because it's no longer as much of a priority in the inner standards. And then social studies. So just to summarize the changes, the addition of the foundational skills and the separating out of that literature and informational texts, communicating mastery a little bit more clearly by tweaking some of the language and making sure that they really, the indicators really align with our current frameworks. That's pretty much what we did. So if anybody has any questions?
Any questions?
Honestly, no. I just have a thank you because this was exceedingly clear.
Okay.
And I mean, just to underscore for anybody watching, like, if you're very clear about the things that you're aiming for as educators, families can see that and say that, wow, okay, they're actually doing that. So anyway, all the changes make sense. They're all consistent with Mass State frameworks. They're all consistent with the very comprehensive ELA review that we're part of as well a year ago. And I just, frankly, I appreciate the consistency and the clarity because, I don't know, whatever. I mean, I do this, but I'm not in elementary level at all, but I still, I understand everything you're saying. So I'm so grateful for how clear this is.
Get down.
Yeah. Looks great.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just add one other thing? Sure. I think that it's important when you think about the work that went into this, so like to your point of the comprehensive review.
Yeah.
When the social studies review was completed, if we came back every time a curriculum review was completed with a report card to align, it would be, it would be really a lot of work and changes all at the same time. So waiting and having the social studies and the English Language Arts at the same time and bringing that forward. You had the math not too long ago, where we had some of those small changes. And then in the future, I know we'll be coming back with some of the process standards too, right?
Yes, we're hoping to get a working group throughout the course of next year to address those process standards that, I'm not sure the last time they were updated, but they're due for a little bit of a review. So we're going to work on that, K-4, hopefully through the course of next year. And then you'll see me back here again with Noel and some changes to those standards.
And then the other important piece is to have this done at this time of year because Power School being our platform and all the work that needs to do, be done within that platform in order to be ready for the fall.
No, I, I'm grateful that, I'm grateful that you all did all of the pre-work to put this on the agenda for tonight because we just want to make sure that you all are set up for the fall to do that which you've already planned to do. And we should never be a roadblock to that kind of progress.
I appreciate that and the teachers will very much appreciate that as well.
Aye.
Absolutely. Does anyone have anything, any other questions or comments? So would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we present the new report card plan as presented this evening.
I second the motion.
All in favor? That's three, zero, zero.
Motion carries and carry on with your very good work.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for all your work on this and for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are on to our Plan for Success for 2022, 23, the update. And this is going to be Dr. Burrows and Dr. Burrows.
Yes, and we'll also pull in Mr. Yutna on our first pillar. But just as a reminder, we have a four-year Plan for Success, which was formerly called our Strategic Plan. And this is year two of that plan. And each year we identify out of those objectives, what are the focus areas for the one-year action plan? So the plan itself has the four pillars when we're looking at facilities, infrastructure, teaching, learning, and pedagogy, well-being, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. What you have up on the screen and then also in your packet, those bold squares, if you will, around those strategic initiatives were in year one, our focus areas. And then the dotted lines are identifying the focus areas for year two. But it does not mean that we forget those that are in bold. Those are many of it, some of them might be complete, but many of those things are going to be ongoing as we go forward. So as we look at each of the pillars, the areas that we identified, those that were dotted, the facilities and infrastructure areas, we focused this year on looking at our physical plants, if you will, looking at the spaces and implementing best practices and preventative measures. And what that looked like was a lot of the training that we've talked about here with partnering with Synergy 911, which was active shooter drills and preparing for anything that would be a critical incident with teachers. That professional development, as you know, we've talked about that, took place in October, it took place in March. And what we've done here to kind of tell the story under each of these pillars are just put some pictures to kind of capture the school year and what took place. So what you see there are some photos from that Synergy 911 training that took place back in October and then also again in March. And that was training all of our staff. We also know that that training was put to the test in the springtime when those swatting calls were taking place. And that really built the confidence of our faculty and staff and I think our students. And we talked about that here at this table, as well as in all of our staff meetings and staff really feeling it was a, it was a great training. It's something that they don't want to have happen in reality, but then when it did happen as far as with that swatting call, which thankfully it was just a swatting call, but it also showed that they were able to put their training into practice. The other pieces that we have focused on this year along with that is, I mean, we've got a great partnership, we know, with our public safety, with fire and police. And you can see there in the top corner in the right, that's one of our SROs, Officer Allen, and she's there at the middle school and just talking with students. And it's, when we talk about community policing, we talk about our officers being in our schools and just building relationships with students. And so they see public safety and police officers in a different way, as really a resource, someone they can go to and talk to and be comfortable with. And so I think that's a great example there, just to see, just sitting down with some students at the Ahern in one of our group spaces. The other pictures that you see there below is our Junior Police Academy, which was new this year. We piloted it over at the Taylor. That's kindergarten and first grade students, that's their graduation. So there's a lot of our officers there with, I can't tell them that picture from here, but I know I had a lot of pictures. Chief Grace up there speaking and with Officer Collins and all of our students that graduated. And it was a great success. They were going to start off with about 25 students, but they just wouldn't turn anyone away. So now the other schools are clamoring to be able to have a junior police academy.
Cool.
So they learned lots of things, like fingerprinting and how they go about that. And then also just, you know, safety. And it was, I think, sometimes challenging when you had a whole lot of kindergartners and first graders and police officers that were teaching them. So lots of stories I'm sure that they have, but it was a great graduation day. Off to the left, that's a picture of, that's an FBI training that we went to along with our police department. And then there was representation from each of our levels administratively. And what we did that day was really look at threat assessment teams.
Yeah.
And when we think about all the critical incidents in school shootings from across the country, it goes back to, there's not one profile. And what are the things that we're supposed to be aware of? And what are the things that we've learned from all of those horrible incidents that have happened? And so that was a full day training that we were able to participate in with the FBI. And that was thanks to the Foxborough Police Department, including us in that. That bottom picture is our students that are in our Metco program, so our students that come from Boston. And Dr. Burrows and Ms. Wiley, who's our Metco coordinator, they were invited to come over and to, again, that partnership is another resource for our students and to, where they're not in the Foxborough community, to give them an opportunity to go to the police station and to be there and see them as a resource, as partners. Some facilities updates, the man trap, if you will, at Foxborough High School, that's something that we have wanted for years. And that was a reality. It had some supply chain issues as far as waiting on some different materials, but we're able to finish that this year. It allows parents, any visitors to come in there, if you've been in, which I think all of you have, to come in that first piece. And then having that window punched in there and the camera access, the visibility that's there. And that has worked out really well. Ms. Johns, who's right there at that window, she loves it. It has been a game changer for her when we have students, our parents, coming in with the doors being locked and having the camera access and to see right there. Also had to put in there the wellness center at the high school as far as updates. I don't know, Bill, if you want to add some comments to either of those?
Yeah. So on the man trapper, we actually were able to accomplish this in both the high school and the middle school. And it's all with school guard safety glass, similar to what we used at the Borough. So it does give a, you know, much better point of protection. As far as the wellness center, much of the equipment that had been in there came years ago when I actually first got to the district and it was a donation by the Y when they were upgrading their equipment. So it had gotten a lot of use, obviously, through them and then obviously got a lot of use from our side. And much of it was in, you know, need of being, either being major repaired or just totally replaced. So we were fortunate based on this year's budget with all the grants still that were, you know, kind of weaning off of this year into next year, but freed up other money for us. So we were able to actually do a major upgrade here. And in the end, not only did we redo all the cardio side of things, but we are in the process of redoing all of the weight strengthening side as well. So that facility will actually be back up to 100%, which I think would be, you know, something that should last easily 10 to 15 years if well-maintained and quite honestly, I think, give the students across the entire, you know, high school level, not just athletes, but, you know, a place to go to, so, and have training.
So these are just some of the examples. As you know, in the actual plan that you have with the action plan, that status column lists by all of the different objectives, what was completed within each area. So whether it's the security, the hardening access of buildings with the facilities, or if it's looking at technology, not just from security cameras, but facilities, we had the full comprehensive review of the K-12 Science Technology Engineering. And that really incorporated when we think about the computer science standards. You have a picture there of kindergarten working with B-bots up there in the top-left corner. And that goes to coding and what computer science standards look like at the very young level. There's from the school committee meeting from before, from Project Lead the Way, as far as our middle school students and what the computer science standards look like within those courses in the Project Lead the Way. And then just a reminder there, the pictures that you have with the vision with the four Es through that comprehensive program review and then just the hands-on kind of investigations that students are doing. So then when we move to the second pillar...
So for our second pillar, if you think back to where we were last year, last year we focused on establishing common language for multi-tiered systems of support. We're a part of two MTSS academies through DESI. One of them is our Inclusive Instruction Academy. The other one is our SEL Academy. Through both of those academies, we're really addressing, supporting all students academically, socially, and emotionally. So our work last year was really about establishing that common language and focusing on establishing those meeting structures to support data-driven decision-making with kids, to support identifying interventions, and get that common language under our belt. This year, we've really focused on, now that we have those structures, how do we support improving instruction? So we, you'll, you'll see over these next couple of slides, there's really been an expansion of our focus on inclusive practices. We're looking at inclusive practices as really being three big buckets. It's that multi-tiered systems of support structure. It's universal design for learning, so supporting teachers and understanding, how do we design units and lessons and learning opportunities where all of our kids have access to grade level standards and we're, we're supporting students in accessing those grade level standards through appropriate scaffolds. And we've also expanded our co-teaching practices as well through our partnership with Dr. Lisa Decker and also through our partnership with our MTSS DESI Inclusive Practices Academy. We've also had the benefit on the other side, on the social-emotional side of things. We've had the benefit of working with Dr. Larry Epstein. He's helped us unpack, we've done some panorama surveys throughout the year. There's been a schedule of surveys throughout the year and we've identified students that would benefit from some social-emotional interventions and had a SEL enrichment program for our students based on that data as well. But Dr. Larry Epstein has helped us really dissect that data and identify those interventions. So if you think about it, MTSS is kind of that structure and that support to everything that we do. And that SEL side, the panorama data is helping us identify tier-two, tier-three interventions for our kids on that side of things. And then the co-teaching and the UDL are helping us improve our classroom practice and be able to really pivot between tier-one and tier-two supports for our students as needed based on their academic performance. Many of our professional development opportunities have focused on building those practices around. You'll see a lot of UDL, you'll see a lot of SEL, and you'll see a lot of co-teaching and also supporting our English language learners. We really tried to make sure that everything that we did in terms of professional development for our teachers was helping synthesize those ideas and see how it all fit together. So we've done a lot of sense-making this year and making sure that we're building teaching practice around these systems and structures. Another piece that we did this year, in the bottom-right corner, you'll see a vision and mission statement that our Professional Development Committee developed. And you'll notice that that vision statement really mirrors what we are looking for for our kids. And we're trying to do that. We're trying to really parallel what we do with our teachers in terms of their professional development opportunities is modeling what we want to see with classroom instruction with our kids. So universally designed, making sure that it's engaging, collaborative, and transferable. In the top right, you'll see, this is just a screenshot of our PD newsletter. That's something that we launched this year to support teachers in understanding, what opportunities do I have to engage in professional development within our district PD days and also outside of those PD days? And then these, these pictures over here are just, you know, just seeing us practice what we preach. You'll, you'll see we, we have kids that are using, using sensory symbols to support communicating their emotions. You'll see a co-teaching example right at the top there with, with two of our teachers co-teaching in the bottom-left. I can't tell what those kids are doing from far away, but it looks like they're using manipulatives and they're in a math class. That's what that looks like. Tiny pictures. So many of our PD opportunities have been choice-based. We've really made sure that we're making time for teachers to collaborate with each other. Our March PD featured some roundtable discussions where teachers really had the time to sit down with each other and talk through, how are we working on social-emotional learning, for example? What barriers are we seeing? What strategies are we using that are effective in really supporting teachers in unpacking that and building their competency around those practices? We're also, we're a part of the SEL Academy as well. So you'll see that, sorry, I can't see from far away. Very small font. I think what that says is that we're in year two of three of our implementation, of our participation in those DESI academies. We had two schools participating this past school year. This year, we now have four schools participating in the MTSS Inclusive Instruction Academy. In addition to that, we're in year two of three in the MTSS SEL Academy. So a part, as a part of that work, we have access to resources through, through the state. We have PD providers that are able to come in and support us through committee meetings, do some classroom walkthroughs and observations with us and support us in improving those practices. And we also have the ability to engage with them through our committee work. We have some standing committees for the SEL Academy. And we also started an Inclusive Practices Working Group this spring. Some of that work is continuing into the summer. We're going to be developing an Inclusive Practices playbook over the summer to once again help synthesize those ideas and help make sense of those practices for teachers so that when we are exiting that year three in each of those DESI academies, we're, we're ready to implement those practices on our own and we've really, we've really built our repertoire around both SEL and inclusive instruction. The FastBridge Literacy Screener is in year, year two of implementation this year. We've done three rounds of screening this year. I believe last year we, we only did two. And the reason why that's, that's so important, it really is supporting our MTSS structure. It's helping us identify which of our kids do need that tier-two intervention. And we've coupled all of that work and that slow rollout of our FastBridge screener with support and training with teachers on how to unpack that data and what to do with that data and how to understand what that, what that data means for what kids need next. And again, just an intentional integration of UDL, MTSS, and SEL work throughout everything that we did this year through district PD days, through our partnerships with, with DESI and with Dr. Lisa Decker and with Dr. Larry Epstein as well. Really trying to make it cohesive and be about the whole child and supporting them academically, socially, and emotionally.
I think that picture right there in the middle, it's hard to see, but you can see that the laptop and there's, you know, data being projected. It's really a hands-on, looking at the data, looking at... It's really a hands-on, looking at the data, looking at our students, where are they? What are we doing to be able to meet their needs? And it's an embedded form of professional development, just looking at that data and talking with your colleagues on, well, how are we meeting their needs? How are we not removing those barriers? And it is a lot of data to look at, and we have the opportunity to look at it multiple times a year. And one of the other pieces, too, where we moved the Professional Development Day to March, where it's always been traditionally in January. You know, in the past, we had always felt, well, if we have the Professional Development Day, that last one later in the year, are we going to benefit as much with how much of the year is left? And so, last school year was the first year that we piloted that, if you will, and then you know you voted the calendar for the next year. It really is a great opportunity, time of year, to be able to come back, look at data, whether it's in our regular department kind of meetings, or whether it's on those PD days, to bring everyone back together, to say, well, what are we getting out of these academies? What are we doing with this data? And then, most importantly, what's the impact that we're having on students?
Okay. And then, for pillar three. Pillar three focuses on well-being. It overlaps so much with pillar two, with the Teaching, Learning, and Pedagogy pillar, but we've done a significant amount of work this year with looking at data, using that panorama survey data to support understanding, what kinds of supports do our students need in terms of social-emotional learning? We have provided a significant amount of job-embedded professional development through the SEL Academy. And also, what you see here, that photo, is Dr. Larry Epstein sitting with our mental health teams and helping them unpack that panorama data, as he did at multiple moments throughout the year, to really support our teachers in unpacking that and understanding. Lastly, a significant part of this pillar has been the introduction of our Community Wellness Coordinator, and those mental health partnerships that we created within our community, within the greater Foxborough community this year, that have really, really benefited our families and our students.
Just before we move on to the next slide, one of the things that I think that is significant about that picture, when Dr. Burrows was saying it's our mental health teams, that's our elementary, middle school, and high school mental health teams coming together, looking at that information three times a year. And it really is a great opportunity, when we think about vertical alignment within the curriculum, but when we're looking about meeting the social-emotional, mental health needs of students, what are our, you know, elementary teachers? What are they hearing? What are they seeing? What are they observing? As well as middle school and high school. And it's really that conversation, to have everyone in the same room at different levels, has really been a great opportunity to know that there are some things that are the same. It really doesn't, some of the, if it's behaviors from, it's still COVID-related, by having some missed opportunities for socialization, we still see that. We still see some of the challenges in classrooms, and teachers have definitely felt that this year. And it helps to know, too, it's not just elementary or middle or high school, and what are those ways and those strategies of engaging students in different ways?
And you'll see how much, in these pictures on the left-hand side here, you see Principal Mike Stanton and Principal Danielle Morrison sitting, Morrissey, sitting and interacting with our kids. We really do have, and our teachers in the middle there at the Ahearn, we really do have just a fantastic community of educators and education leaders that care about kids, care about creating a community where all kids feel like they're home, and like they can be successful. And that is, it's not just a focus in our Plan for Success, that's just a part of who we are, and we're proud of that. Up in the right-hand corner there, you can see, that is Amy Muldowney, our Community Wellness Coordinator, presenting at one of our district-wide PD days on the Castle Wheel, and what those five core competencies are, and what that looks like in terms of classroom practice. And in the bottom-right corner, you see our favorite boxer, Duke, who was introduced at the Middleland High School this spring, and is slated to be at the elementary schools soon, as soon as we get him acclimated to our environment in the upcoming school year.
And that picture there, just have to mention, with the tennis ball with Duke, that was at the end of the year, and when Kami Tadoldi had Duke going through a classroom, it was a student at the Ahearn that had that tennis ball in his desk, and he was waiting for Duke to come back to revisit, and was so excited when Duke came back through, and pulled out the tennis ball and said, I've been waiting, and it was for Duke.
Oh, that's really sweet.
And on this slide, these are just examples. This is certainly not exhaustive. We've had a number of community events, parent events in the evening, and also during the school day, where we've engaged with our community partners, and supported parents and students in the area of mental health and social-emotional learning, unpacking that, understanding that. There've been a number of presentations by the Mark Center and by Minding Your Mind that have been really impactful for our families.
And thinking of all of those opportunities right there, as we move to pillar four, one of the things that's become more and more clear to us is really that intersection for diversity, equity, and inclusion, when we talk about belonging with well-being. They really are intertwined. So, if you go back to all of those opportunities to provide resources to families, to teachers and staff, and how we can remove barriers and really show the diverse needs of students, and how we're meeting those needs, it just makes sense when we think about pillar four. So, under pillar four, investigating practices and data that can, you know, look at the professional development that we're offering, just in time, that we're meeting the needs of teachers with students where they are, such as, you know, some of the things that you've seen this year at meetings, such as the Ahearn Humans Project, and No Place For Hate that was implemented at the middle school. That was a big part of their school improvement plan. And all of the school improvement plans, they get their, they are, this is the driving force, if you will. So, just as a reminder, the Plan for Success, the school improvement plans build off of that, of what makes sense at each level. So, as we looked at diversity, equity, and inclusion, really focusing this year on the initiatives that are going to make sense from a professional development side, from ensuring inclusivity and equity for students, looking at that through a data-inquiry-based lens, where we're looking at course schedules, when we're looking at the panorama data, when we're looking at the K-12 Culture and Climate Survey data, that perception data. And then, also importantly, one of the things that we did this year with our committee was Student Voice, and having focus groups, fourth graders for the elementary in each of the three schools, really asked, we had, we worked on those questions with the committee this year. Then, we went out and had focus groups with fourth graders, then with all grades at the middle school, and then at the high school. And take, that was a lot of data that came back to the DEI Committee, looking at what we heard. And one of the things that came out loud and clear was, students want to, they were appreciative that their voice was asked and heard, and they had a lot to say. So, taking that information and how that impacts our practice going forward, it's not just the focus groups, it's taking, and that information from those focus groups is part of our professional development in August as well, in planning going forward. And then, the opportunities that we can create to get Student Voice even more so next school year. The picture you see there, I think this is a great example here, when we talk about an inclusive environment in our students, that were our homecoming king and queen this year at the high school. When we look at these next pictures, these are very familiar to you as far as the events that took place, with unified basketball at the high school and at the middle school, which was such a wild success. The Unified Bocce at the high school and Unified Track. It just really exploded this year with all of the opportunities and access. And so, I think these were just, it was hard to choose pictures to put here to kind of tell that story. And the first games that we had, as you know, at the end of the school year in June, and that opportunity to have K-22-age students, and all of the parent volunteers, as you well know, too, that really helped make that happen, along with having Pat the Patriot, you know, join us, and the cheerleaders, and then our police department, and so many people there to support our students, in an exciting, inclusive environment, which was just a great day for everyone. So, those are some examples, I think, that are real concrete examples of the inclusive environment, and making sure that everyone feels included and that they belong. The other areas, when we talk about equity and opportunity, is ensuring that the communication piece is there for access. You've seen earlier this year, the communication boards that were installed at each of the elementaries, and then at the middle school as well, for communication devices. Just when we think about technology and opportunities for access, augmented of communication, that's a, you heard earlier this year with the preschool, when they presented as Teaching and Learning Highlight, all of the different ways that they're providing access for students. So, that's just one snapshot there. The bottom-left corner is an American Sign Language Club that took place after school at the IGO, and Principal Morrissey, she led that. She's fluent in sign language. And so, what a wonderful opportunity for students to see their principal in a different way. And then, you're very familiar with our World Culture Night that takes place annually each year. And it's just so wonderful, the families that come out and share their cultures and stories, and food, of course, with us. And it's just, it's been a great success in year after year, and so many people look forward to that night. The other opportunities for parents, when we're looking at, what can we do to help bring acceptance with our greater community, and really looking at neurodiversity and what that looks like, when we're talking about, what are some of the accommodations that can be made? What can parents do at home to help build visual, you know, that make-and-take workshop that they had? To be able to really bring communication in ways that maybe weren't thought of for parents, and build that partnership and build that bridge at home. The Community Resource Fair that took place. There's Michelle, right there in the middle of that picture as well. But when we're talking about removing barriers for students, but also removing barriers for families, and the resources that were there, that was partnering with Mansfield, and again, was wildly successful. They had over 50 different resources and supports that were there for that evening. I don't know, Michelle, to put you on the spot, if there's anything you wanted to add from that particular event?
There was a lot of work put into that event, and we got a lot of feedback from parents that they had never seen an event like that occur before. Usually, when they have event fairs like that, there aren't as many people who come together in one location like that. So, the fact that we actually pulled off something so successful was amazing, and I'm hoping we can pull it off again next year. Just, it was huge. And it kind of gave us an idea of what we want to target next time. There are a few areas where we thought we were lacking in, and perhaps we can get some better resources there. But it was, for the first year, it was huge. It was huge. It was a huge success. And Amy Muldowney was huge in that, and so was Cory Michaelazek, and of course, Carrie Weston and Erin Boz.
Yep.
Huge help. But yeah, huge, it was a huge hit.
So, this last slide is really just kind of a summary of many different things that meet the status column, if you will, in that one-year action plan for this year. Joining the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, that provides on-demand modules for teachers for professional development. By us being a member there, they're able to take in part some of those opportunities. Same thing with the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth. That's a new membership that we have for on-demand professional development. The expansion of responsive classroom, when we think about meeting the needs of students, that expanded to the middle school this year. A lot of the UDL, that Dr. Burrows has mentioned, the Mark Center, even having Dr. Elizabeth Englander, she was one of the presenters this school year, and meeting the needs for students, when we think about all that they are exposed to from a technological standpoint. And then, the Ideas Courses were some courses that are part of our DEI Committee, and expanding that, we had them come to some of our committee's meetings this year and provide more professional development with us there. And one of our big goals for, under this pillar, was to talk about, what is our next step with professional development, in particular, with all staff, and to focus for next school year? Hearing from our students, what are the needs? We've received the preliminary data for the K-12 Culture and Climate Survey that was administered in the spring, we'll present all of that in the fall. And that is really, just looking at it very quickly, just received it yesterday, is reiterating what we already know. The areas of meeting students' social-emotional needs, removing barriers, helping teachers with strategies within the classroom to be able to meet needs. And then, when we think from a cultural standpoint, culturally responsive, teaching techniques, and really thinking about the stories that our students bring, bringing their stories, we know relationships are important, but knowing what the stories are from all of our students. And we think the diversity in Foxborough has become more diverse. I heard once, and I don't remember who said it, but we are, it's not just about looking at, we might be 85% a white community and 15% diversity, when we think about other ethnicities. It's really that we're 100% diverse, because we're all different. And what are the stories that we bring to the table? And what are our, you know, cultures and things that we can learn from each other? So, when we think about that, it's about belonging, and that's really our focus, but really, that intertwining of social-emotional learning and removing barriers, providing access, and where people feel included, and the idea of belonging.
I would just add that, you know, fundamentally, when you look across each of our pillars, even in pillar one, where we're looking at facilities and infrastructure, but across each of the other pillars, really what it comes down to is, we're trying to provide those equitable opportunities for kids, and we're doing that through inclusive practices. So, everything about belonging that Dr. Berdus was speaking to, and all of our work on well-being and supporting our students socially and emotionally, and that MTSS work and those support structures that we've put in place, that's really what it comes down to. We're trying to create an education experience where all kids have access, all kids have opportunities, and all kids feel welcome. And it really, all of those pillars really overlap so nicely. It's such a well-crafted Plan for Success, and it's a part of everything that we do.
I always feel bad not asking any questions, but I just, you've done such a good job being so thorough with your presentation, with your information, with the research and data and effort that you put in behind it. So, really, thank you very much for all of that. I really do appreciate it, but I have no questions.
The only thing I'll add, too, what I think, when we're talking about this plan and the action plans drive each of the school improvement plans. So, at the end of the school year, we all come together in like a carousel activity with everyone, and look at each of the pillars. And then, we, from an administrative leadership team, what are all of the things that have taken place this year that go towards those pillars? So, elementary principals can hear from the high school, you know, principal, assistant principals, which then, you've got the leadership team at the high school. And then, you see those things of what have taken place over the year. But importantly, it helps at the end of the school year, I think, a couple of things. Number one, we realize, wow, we've accomplished a lot during the school year. There's been a lot of hard work by teachers, staff, and administrators. So, it's a feel-good moment to realize what we've done, but then, doing that at that time of year, it helps with any of the summer work that's taking place, and as we gear up for the fall. So, that really drives when we'll present the action plans to you in the fall for year three of this four-year plan.
Just wanted to comment, you brought up a point. A lot of that good, hard work that you've done has been uphill, because COVID struggles are still there. So, you've got that layer of, you know, on top of everything else you've done. So, again, thank you. Any questions from anyone else? Comments?
My only comment is that, piggybacking off of what Sarah had just said, that the last two years, if memory and notes, I take a lot of notes, serve the committee for two years run. two years running has been impressed with how much you and your team had been able to accomplish. Even with the majority of the committee saying, you know what, just, just handle the COVID thing, would you? Would you just, just handle that? And then, but you just kept going and you kept plotting ahead with your, more than plotting, you kept striding ahead with your, this, this Plan for Success. And it's where there's still a lot of effects, as you have all indicated, but it's really, really awesome to see you all and your team have their stride again. And this is a very, very high-performing team that you've assembled, and they came to play. And it's really, really nice to see all that you're accomplishing when we're not having to model and remodel and remodel and remodel our learning model. And it's, it's, it's a true joy to see that you all can hit the astounding number of benchmarks that you've all placed for yourself. And one of the things that I and other committee members have said, again, and again, and again, it can't be stressed enough, is that you and your team are ambitious, and that's what we want, that's what this community needs. You're, but you're ambitious in a very measured, research and data-driven way, in that the wheels move forward with evidence, reflection, reassessment, and that is evident through and through, and your framing of the plan, your evaluation of it, your ongoing tweaking of it as it moves forward. So with all that, all those words, again, all I can say is just thank you.
No, I just, we should be proud that we have a plan like this in place. I'm just, you know, incredibly impressed, like Foxborough should be proud to have this. This is.
We are. I'm proud.
We are.
Hundred percent. Are there any other comments on this from anyone? Okay. With that, we're going to move to the next thing on the agenda, which is further discussion about the superintendent evaluation, so.
So that really is just a placeholder on the agenda. If there's any additional, I gave you a lot of information at the last meeting. I know I have some of you that I'm scheduled with this week to, for individual meetings. So if there's anything else that you're wanting me to provide to the committee?
I think I'm, I'm good. Do you have anything?
No, this is my first time around, so I think I have a lot to learn. So I think I'm just going to dive right into it when we meet.
I'll add, and this is not for you, Dr. Berdus, but this is something that I've been remiss in talking about with the committee. And rather than speaking to every individual member, this forum is the more appropriate place for it, which is, in my short tenure on the committee and, and your time leading the district, the form and format with, that we're doing this evaluation has changed. And you, Dr. Berdus, have been very good about walking the committee through that and the implications of the changes and everything. And so the only thing that I would say, and I should be on record as saying it, is that, these are tips for new committee members, that, is that Dr. Berdus and her team have sent us a blank version of this document that we can fill in. And Dr. Berdus is, not to a fault, but to her acclaim, incredibly detailed in how she evaluates herself and all the evidence she provides. And that's, I can say from experience in other places, that is not norm. That we're very, we're very fortunate to have her. And that I, my only advice to committee members is as you consider all the evidence that she's provided for you, when you fill out the evaluation, do that, which I was not capable or wise enough to do my first year on the committee, which is, that I've come to learn, is that take all of her evaluations to heart and her ratings to heart and the various things, and then as you fill in the different boxes, why do you think what you think for every box? Reflect upon what she's said, if you have things to add. She takes this so seriously, and she should, provide that, like, I think you are blank in this area because of this and this, this is what really stood out for me this year, and so on and so forth. And just personalize it, because I think that will do her and therefore the district a greater service than personally I could have provided my first few years on the committee. So, anyway.
Thank you for that input. That is, it sounds like it was hard for me last year.
Yeah.
It was my first year.
It's a lot.
It was really hard for me because I'm like, well, you know, it was intimidating.
I know.
It was intimidating. And after doing it once, like, I do feel more comfortable going into this year.
We get better.
What?
We all get better.
Yeah. Yeah. I think you just get more comfortable with the process. It's daunting. That, I mean, it is.
Yeah.
It's daunting, it's a lot, there's a lot of information, but great, great point, to just personalize it and humanize it, because that's what we're doing, you know?
Yeah, within the four pillars, and that, because.
Yes, of course.
I mean, as, as we all know.
Following the framework, of course.
As we all know, Dr. Berdus takes this and should, and we are, to her, to our whole community's benefit, she takes it incredibly seriously.
To our whole entire district's benefit. Thank you.
So thank you.
I look forward to my individual meetings with you.
Here.
Likewise. Thank you. Okay, so we're moving along to our next item, which is an acceptance of donation. We do have a $2,500 donation from the Foxborough High School Softball Boosters.
Yeah.
So do you have any questions on this or any comments?
So I think, as you know, one of our guidelines is that if, if the boosters program for any of the sports wished to augment our coaching staff in any way, obviously we feel that we supply coaching staff at the level that's consistent with other school districts and that, you know, maintains a safe environment. But a lot of the boosters clubs have an opinion of having some additional staff to help, maybe to advance the, the program in any way they can.
Sure.
We require them to make those donations to us, because we then hire the individual and pay the individual. So we have control, we've queried, we've done everything we are supposed to do, and we don't just have people kind of running around unbeknownst to us, because obviously they'd still be under our insurances and other issues. So they have generously donated the $2,500 to basically sponsor two individuals that have helped to support the softball program.
Very good, thank you.
With that, I move to accept with deep gratitude the donation of $2,500 for the softball assistance for this past year.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Vote passes, the donation passes with gratitude. Three zero zero.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. So we have one more agenda, and we need Mr. Yukna to speak to this, and this is on pre-ped special education out of district tuition.
So as you remember, a number of years ago with, with COVID, because we did have obviously a great reduction in our budget needs, we were able to, for the first time, actually do some prepayments. This is kind of a safeguard that, you know, and it does happen, where we have move-ins that come in the middle of the summer that we are now responsible for. So this is a kind of a safeguard to kind of keep us going forward and effectively, once you do it, you want to stay in the process, because it keeps your costs consistent year to year. Last year, we, we basically were able to do about just under 402,000. This year, based on the, what we have outside in these programs, the number is 384,852.27. You have a list of the different schools that basically we would be making these payments to, to equal that total. And again, it, it will be part of our total out-of-district tuitions, which range pretty close to $3 million on an annual basis.
Aye.
All right, well, thank you for the explanation. Can I add a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to prepay the special education out of district tuitions for July, August, and September 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Can you just add the amount?
In the amount of?
And the, for the amount of $384,852.27.
Thank you.
All in favor? Three zero zero, it passes.
Thank you for the detail, per usual, Mr. Yukna.
Yes, thank you very much for the attention to detail on that. Can I just ask a quick question on that? We voted it through. Did you mention something about us, not, by prepaying, we avoid any increases in tuition or any increases as well, or no?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't stop the increases that, that come through on their tuition rates, it just, it really is just the safeguard of, of, you know, additional costs hitting us, not really having to force us back to the town for additional funding.
Okay. I didn't know if it grandfathered us in for different rates or anything like that. Okay, I apologize, thank you.
No, it's fine. I think the past practice there has been presenting the town, well, the committee first, then the town, with a responsible, flexible budget that handles quite a range of eventualities, and, and then not having to have a town special meeting if something comparatively unforeseen comes forward, because Mr. Yukna, Dr. Berdus, and their teams just plan for a lot of, a lot of incidentals.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Another reason why we're so grateful to have you.
Here.
Okay, that brings us to other matters on the agenda. So I'm going to start over here with Michelle. Anything going on with the C-BAG?
No, no, it's, it's end of the year, so I think.
Are you still looking for officers?
We, we are still looking for members, yeah. We have, we have gotten a few parents who've expressed interest, but yes, we're always looking for members, and in.
Do it.
In September, you'll hear from us again.
Great.
They're very important.
Well, thank you for all your work, and thank you and the committee and to everyone for all your great work. So thank you to that. I'd like to share, I have two other matters. Parks and Rec, we'd like to let you all know that the Booth Summer Program is up and running, day two, and it was great, and everything's awesome. I'd like to give a shout-out to IGO Cares, which is a subsidiary of the IGO PTO. This year, they granted four scholarships to students and sent them to the Booth Summer Program. So I thought that was, that was a nice mention, Renee wanted me to update that. I thought it's another great way that, you know, our town comes together for each other to support each other, so I thought that was great. And then I just want to, in open meeting and in this venue, just solidify, we're kind of all over the place about our retreat. So Monday, July 24th, we have an in-person retreat at the Chapel Meeting House, I believe that is our location.
Mill Street.
Mill Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the Chapel Meeting House on Mill Street, and that is at 5:30 PM. We'll go into executive session and then open it up. So I was asked to mention it, so we have.
Thank you.
We have solidified that date, so.
Mr. Ruda?
As a gift to the committee and the community, I have nothing else to say.
Mr. Ruda?
I actually don't have anything, other than summer has started and looking outside to see the kids at the Booth playground.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, it's just nice to see them.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
And how was the close, I guess I'm throwing this out there, but what was the general feel about the wrap-up of the year? Everybody's feeling good, everybody's positive, I mean, it seems.
It was a great end of the year. I think people were very happy that we didn't have any snow days, and that we ended on what was projected as the last day, the 16th. And so that was all really smooth. We've been really busy with the number of retirements that we've had, many of those hirings, and so, you know what, I'm actually glad you asked that question, because teachers are out, but even today, so many teachers that are coming in and working with their principals on hiring committees.
Yeah.
They're out for the summer, but that's how important it is for them, for their colleagues, and that's all on their own time. So we're just really appreciative that they're willing to come back, because it's important to have the different voices at the table.
Hundred percent.
So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Dr. Berdus?
I have nothing to add.
Summer Institute.
Oh, this week, I almost forgot. This week, we're hosting our Summer Institute. This year, we changed the model a little bit, so it's a, it's a three-day course this year. We've had a partnership with Bridgewater State University. We have two BSU professors teaching the inclusion classroom and it's Sheltered English Immersion Course as well. And in addition to that, we have a project-based learning course being taught by our very own Holly Jeffers, a high school English teacher, and our community wellness coordinator, Amy Muldowney, is teaching a social emotional learning course. So we've had great attendance, we're, we're really excited about the feedback that we've been getting, and, and people have really appreciated that shift in structure. It's a real deep dive into all the things that we've been working on this school year, so, and it's going well.
That's awesome.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Yukna?
Nope, I have nothing, thank you.
Nathan?
How many days of school after?
That's unusual. How many days of summer left?
Never know the days of summer. Yes! Never count them.
That's awesome.
True optimism.
All right, with, with that, if no one has anything else to add.
I move to adjourn.
What was that?
And would you like a second?
Want to second that? Oh, second, yeah, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.